I'd like to welcome everybody here today. We're thankful we all got out. Just, I saw a little sunshine earlier. I haven't seen it for a long time, but I saw a little bit earlier. Maybe we'll have some better weather before it's all over with. I hope we do. So, thank you all for being here tonight. Uh, we're gonna start out with a public hearing. And I'll turn the meeting over to our esteemed attorney.
Thank you, Mayor.
And he led him, then we'll open the meeting.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to let everyone know that the City of Tifton's written public hearing procedures, the City of Tifton's standards for exercising of zoning powers, and a copy of Georgia's conflict of interest laws were available as a handout and are also posted for public review. Uh, the matter under consideration tonight is a, our text amendments to the City of Tifton Land Development Code, Chapter 6 and Chapter 7. The applicant is the City of Tifton, this application number T-15-000-001. Uh, the text amendment to Chapter 6 is to correct an inconsistency between the language of the text contained in Section 6.01.05(c) and the visibility of intersection's diagram. The text amendment as to Chapter 7 is to add a new section, 7.09.01, to be titled "Permitted Signs in Right-of-Way: Permitted Directional Real Estate Signs at Certain Locations Within the City's Right-of-Way." Uh, prior to taking any public input on these text amendments, I'm going to ask Mr. Crowe if he would, uh, acquaint the crowd with those text amendments, as well as the staff report and recommendations.
Mr. Brown, before he begins, do I need to recuse myself, or, since I'm with a real estate company, is there any conflict?
Not at this point. This is just a public hearing.
Okay, you'll just let me know if I do. I appreciate that. Okay.
Uh, the first out of Chapter 6 is a correction in a diagram, and it just has been explained already, changing what says three feet to two feet, which will make it consistent with what is in the Land Development Code, in the verbiage of the Land Development Code. It was taken before the Planning and Zoning Commission and was approved unanimously for the change. The second part in Chapter 7 is an addition of a completely new section, which permits signs in the right-of-way, which would be real estate directional signs in the mitered corner designated streets. This was generated by a recommendation of a council committee, along with the real estate businesses throughout the City of Tifton, and would end up being a six-by-24 sign, um, no higher than two foot tall. It would be like one on each corner, both left and right of each street. And, um, it was sent through to the Planning and Zoning Commission and was voted on unanimously there, too, to approve it, and staff recommendations for both of them are to approve.
That sign size was six inches by twenty.
Six inches by twenty, what did I say?
Six by twenty-four.
Right.
I just thought we'd make it clear.
Inches, I'm sorry. Six inches by twenty-four inches, excuse me.
All right, thank you, Mr. Crowe. Uh, all right, uh, first I'd like to hear, anyone who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Anyone here who's speaking in favor? Is there anyone here that would like to oppose the proposed text amendments and application?
I've got a question.
Sure.
I'd like to know, why can't we put a timeframe on how long that sign has to be removed from the time it was put there, if the house is sold, or whatever the purpose of the sign was, so it's not up there for six months?
My understanding is directional signs will be on the mitered corners at certain street locations. It's not really the, in front of the houses for sale, it's direct for houses to be sold.
I understand, sir. But if you're at the corner of Tiff Avenue and Forty-Eighth Street, certain times of the year, there's a sign there for anything that you want. Houses, arrows, politicians, yard sales, garage sales, and then they just stay. Why can't we add a timeframe that once you implement the signage, that you have so many days before it has to be taken down?
I assume that that would be your comment in opposition, that you think that there should be a time limitation on the amount of time that the sign can be made at the corner?
Right, I mean, if, if a real estate person has a sign for sale, and it's in the right place, and the house is up for sale, and they have an arrow pointing to it, that's fine. I'm not against that. I'm saying that once that house is sold, then the real estate company should have, will just throw out seven days to remove the sign.
I understand. So, in the event that there's no property to be sold on that street with the directional sign, then the directional sign should be removed once the, the house is sold?
Right. But it's more about, not as much the real estate's problem as the other people that put up signs for everything else in the brother, in that right-of-way.
Well, right now, these signs are not permitted in the right-of-way, and Mr. Crowe is the enforcement of that.
We'll discuss that in a minute.
Okay. All right, is there anyone else about to speak in opposition to the proposed application and comments? No further comments, I'd ask that the public hearing be closed?
Okay, it's closed. Thank you. And we'll call the meeting to order. And we're gonna, we always start our meeting with a prayer and a pledge, because we do live in a free country. And, uh, I think I got voted to do the prayer, even though I did it in January, and you did it in February, and we'll do it again tonight. So, uh, if I could just ask you to please bow your head, let's. Good Father, we, we certainly thank you that we live in a free country. We live in a country where we can be kept safe, we don't have to, to worry about having open meetings and speaking our piece. Uh, we just thank you for that. There's other countries and other places where you can't do that. And we thank you. We thank you for our troops, Father, wherever they may be, but especially those that are on the way. Father, we just ask that you protect them, bring them home safely. We further, Father, pray for their families and friends and country that await their safe return. Father, be with us as we make these decisions for this beautiful city that we all five love so much, dear Father. We're here to serve the people, and we thank you that we've gotten this opportunity to do so. And our Father be with us in each and everything we do, and be with our families. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, for God and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I now need a motion to approve the council agenda.
So moved.
I've got a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please, if you can raise your right hand, saying aye. Aye. That is unanimous, Mr. Brown. We now come to a time when, uh, as I've said many times, we, we work for y'all. And this is the time with citizen input where we can hear from our bosses, basically. And let us know what you, what you're, is on your mind, or what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong, which is what we're doing. And, uh, I've got, uh, one person, Mr. Mark Brown, Mark, I believe, that's you sitting right there. And, uh, once you get up here, we'll ask you to give your, your name again and your location. Our city manager will give you the time. I think it's five minutes. He, he keeps up with all that, he does the timing. We do everybody the same way. And if you could make your way to the podium, give us your address, it's a pleasure to have you here tonight.
Thank you.
Yes.
Welcome, Mayor, City Council, City Councilwoman. My name is Mark Brown. I live at 606 East Forty-Eighth Street in Tifton. I do own that property, so I am a taxpayer, so it's not a rental piece of property. And I'm here to talk about code enforcement. Over the last year or so, I've had several opportunities to deal with the code enforcement department, beginning with the public election of the state court judge race in May of last year. At the end of May, excuse me, the end of June, uh, I had contacted the code enforcement office to get the signs in our neighborhood at, leaning up against the stop signs at Forty-Fourth, Forty-Sixth, Forty-Eighth, and Fiftieth Street, all removed. Rocked on for two weeks, nothing was done about it. At this point, on or about July the 7th, I contacted the city manager and, about the situation, and told him what I'd just discussed with y'all. He, at that time, picked up his radio in his truck and radioed to somebody in code enforcement or somewhere to go get those signs picked up. He said, "Mark, they'll be gone in a few minutes." I said, "Thank you, Larry." So Debbie and I, my wife, who resides in the same residence, and I took a vacation for three weeks to Missouri and to Illinois, and we came back, and lo and behold, them signs are still laying against the stop signs. So I then called, after went through the mail, there was nothing in the mail from the city, nothing from the code enforcement office about it. I then called Larry and said, "Larry, the signs are still up." And I say, "Larry," meaning Mr. Reiner, and he was thankful enough to pick up his radio then, called whoever he needed to call, and said, "Mark, I apologize, them signs will be gone in five minutes." And they were gone in five minutes. So, I want to make it clear that this didn't have anything to do with Larry, because Larry, Larry did his part, but whoever on the receiving end didn't do their part. My problem with code enforcement is, I'll have to excuse me, I have clumpus in my leg.
You want to sit down?
Would you like to sit down? Just go ahead and sit down there, Mark Brown.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What, uh, and what, what I'm saying is, if we have an enforcement division, that that's, those political signs have been out there for a month after the election, against the law, because they were leaning against stop signs. Who's policing the area if they have, well, I know of three employees on the road at the code enforcement office. They, in conversation after that with Burke, can't be everywhere. That was his exact words. So I filed another complaint about the truck, truck parking at Pigley Wiggly. This is the response I got back from Burke. I want y'all to look at that. Now, I did, I went through the process, and he's gonna, uh, do a report and get back to me. I want you to see the report. If you call that a report, I got first grade friends that could write a better report than that. Now, my issue is, the city forced everybody in town to take down the old previous signs on the old buildings because of code enforcement violations. Now, at the same time, Pigley Wiggly closed, and every Tom, Dick, and Harry that owned a semi started parking up there. A friend of mine owns some property that is attached to that parking lot, and according, according to the covenants, uh, he couldn't even, uh, get his employees' area to park because semis were in the way. Then I was told that it's okay for them to park. Why do we have covenants that tell you that you can do something if there's no way to enforce it? So what I'm asking y'all to do, because of my actions with the code enforcement department, is to do away with it. Give it back to the county, take that money, put firemen out there in the fireplace, firehouse that we built that nobody's in for two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Appreciate you coming.
Larry, you got any thoughts?
Uh, not at this time. I think that, uh, I would like more, uh, council to know that the semi parking, and Mark copied me on some of his emails, the, uh, one thing, that's private property, and it's on a state route, so, uh, they have permission from the property owners to park those trucks there. And there is absolutely nothing that we, as the city, can do about the tractor trailers that will park in the parking lot. That is all perfectly legal and, uh...
But it wasn't legal, Larry.
Mr. Brown, it was legal. That's what the rules say. They had permission from the property owner to park the tractor trailers there, and if he gives them permission, we cannot force them to move those trucks.
Bob Christian wasn't even aware of the third or sixth parking spot rule that Lifeline has, and Broadleaf had Travis Park, and those third or sixth parking spots. Did you check that out?
No.
Okay, go to the courthouse, it's on the docket.
That's all ahead, council.
Okay. You raised up some good issues, though. Sure do. And I'd like to explore some of them.
And one thing that I'd like to add to it, I'm not after the ones that's buying hotel rooms and parking their parking, their trucks in a parking area. That's not the people I'm after. If they're spending money in Tiff County, they, or Tifton, they should have a right to park. But if they're not, then they need to be like companies I've worked for and invested in property in Tifton.
Okay. Okay, we're gonna need to move on, and, uh, uh, we'll get the approval of the minutes for the January 15th workshop, the call meeting on February the 2nd. Wait a minute. Oh, the workshop and call meeting on January 15th, and the February 2nd regularly. So...
I second.
I got a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please, anybody raise your right hand, saying aye. That is unanimous. We now, ladies and gentlemen, have a thing we call Consent Agenda. It's where we put several different items, and what I'll do is, I will ask my cohorts up here, if there's any one of these, or two, or a number of these, that we want to set aside and not do them all at one time. But we want you to know that we've been over these in a workshop. Sometimes we discuss this over the phone with Larry, and sometimes we get emails. So, we don't want you to think that just because we're fixing to do a consent agenda on X amount of these, that we don't study each and every one of them, and look at each and every one of them. So I will ask the council, is there any of these consent agenda items that you want to, uh, take off the consent agenda so that you can talk about individually? Okay, seeing that, then I'll accept a motion to, for the consent, entire consent agenda.
I so moved, approve items two through 12.
Sir.
I got a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please, anybody raise your right hand, saying aye. Aye. That is unanimous, Mr. Brown. Now we're going into ordinance, since we have a, uh, ordinance for the providing of text amendment to the Land Development Code, I think we talked about relating the right-of-way signage amendment to Chapter 6. Um, I accept a motion on that.
So moved.
I got a motion.
Is that, is that what we just had, the public hearing?
Yeah, this, that has relation to the diagram that needs to be corrected to correspond to the text of the code, to two feet.
This isn't the one that Mrs. Brown put together.
That's Chapter 7, that I believe is...
That's the next one.
Is number 14.
Okay. I second number 13.
I've got a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please, anybody raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. That is unanimous. Now, item number 14 is what we discussed earlier, discussing ordinance providing protection amendments to the Land Development Code related to right-of-way signage, amending Chapter 7, T-15-0001.
Mr. Mayor.
Sorry.
On board.
Yes.
Does Mrs. Smith need to recuse herself from number seven?
I think that would probably lead to that.
I would feel better for you. I'll be all right.
No, you won't.
He said it.
Okay, uh, item number 14, I'll accept a motion.
Well, I know we gotta have some motions to get to the discussion phase, but can we go ahead and discuss it? Because it's got, on discussion, on the agenda, Ron, before we start making motions.
That was my error, I'm sorry.
It should be...
Yeah, I've never seen that before.
You've got discussion written on here.
Right. It should be, you know, a motion and a second, and then discussion.
The discussion of should have been on.
That's right. That's my error.
Basically, once, once there's been a motion and a second, then you can discuss it, and then if y'all decide that you want to make any amendments, then you can, you know, propose to amend the main motion and add some additional verbiage, or change the verbiage if you so desire, and then you can go ahead and discuss the proposed amendment to the main motion.
Let me make a note here, though, uh, do we need to have a, a vote to agree that we take the discussion of off? But it is on there. I'm just asking a legal question.
I don't believe so, Mayor.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it was, that's just a typo.
Yeah, it is, that's all it is. You didn't know we had to do something about it. We'll move the question into minutes. Okay.
Ron and you, I can't see. Okay, well, I, I make a motion then to discuss item number 14.
Sir.
I have a motion, and a second. Now we'll enter into discussion.
Um, Mr. Brown did bring up a good point about a timeframe for that stuff. I would like to see something like that added, if it's not already in there. And maybe, maybe Burke can explain that.
Burke's got the code here, it's 10 days. You want to read that for me?
Um, yeah, it just says, it says when a business or service utilizes a sign, it's discontinued, i.e., a house is sold. All signs related to that business or service shall be removed or neutralized within 10 days of the date of the notification in writing. So as soon as it's notified that it's been discontinued, they have to remove it, we give them 10 days and a letter.
Okay. It might be helpful for the viewers at watching at home, and Mr. Brown, to go over your process for picking those up.
Okay. Uh, when we get calls on signs, or when we're doing routes, and we find signs, if they're in the right-of-way, which would be on the right-of-way, we would pick them up automatically. If you're talking about right-of-way signs, though, we should talk about in general.
Talking about the sign number 14.
Well, those particular signs, if we were to see that the house was no longer, a house, because keep in mind, these signs are generic, so they would cover for the whole entire community. I mean, for any company that was out there. If we were to ever tour that portion and realize there were no house for sale at all, then we would call and send a letter, that sign must be removed within 10 days. We'd notify whichever, by color code, that sign belonged to.
Okay.
Those, that's why we, we had so many on the corners, and that's what, I think, part of the complaint is, especially with the real estate signs, that's what we're trying to alleviate here, is to get them off the corners, only have one on the corner. Uh, as far as signs that are there, we pick up two, three hundred a, a year from all over, and they just keep coming back. Now, keep in mind, any sign that has to do with politics, elections, they can be in the right-of-way, and I can't touch them until so many days after the election.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's state law, that's not local law, that's state law. So, but anything that we see, uh, we do try to give a little allowance for yard sale signs, although when we get back there on the Mondays or Tuesdays, as soon as we can get there, we try to make sure we contact the people with the number, they'll have a number, their addresses on them, and let them know what the rules say. Uh, but that's, that's our procedure, is what the book says to do, 10 days notice.
Okay. When did that, Burke, when did that change? That, I'll only give you an example, Governor Deal swung by before his election and talked out at the bread shop, uh, and, and I understand that we took up all those signs that were assigned. Was that a different, was that because there was so many signs?
That was because of the fact that that was not for, that was for a situation where those were not, they were in, completely in the right-of-way, and they were lined streets, corner to corner.
Okay.
And not specifically in a place where the right-of-way is not extending out. I mean, it was on a major thoroughfare, and that's why those were pulled. They weren't supposed to be in the right-of-way on that particular piece of property.
Okay. Mr. Crowe has a question.
Uh, excuse me, uh, Mr. Manager, didn't, didn't we have a meeting at, at your office last year, when you there?
Yeah.
With, with the, uh, the realtors?
That's right.
And we agreed, they agreed that after a certain timeframe, if their houses were sold or were not sold, that they would contact Burke and, and, and pick up those signs? You and I were there, remember?
Right.
And, uh, I think, what, what we gave, we, we did a, uh, 10 day after, 10 day before. If, if your, if your house is sold, you have X amount of time to call Burke, uh, to go pick up your signs.
Mm-hmm.
We agreed to that. So this is what?
Yes, it was 10 days, is what that is for.
Okay, I just want to make sure we, because the realtors were, uh, took responsibility for doing that.
That's right. We also changed the fee.
Yeah.
They were saying fee that the person associated with it, and it's now five dollars a sign.
That's right.
But it was like forty something dollars a sign, or something pretty, something pretty...
Pretty outrageous, but we brought it down.
Yeah, right, the sign costs four dollars to make, you know. Um, well, I'll tell you, um, and I'm blowing over the weather tonight, so I'm sorry, I kind of don't sound as animated as normal. Um, on that situation that the mayor just spoke of, you know, six minutes ago, you said they were allowing the right-of-way.
Well, I'm gonna have to double check on that, on all the right-of-way setback on them, because I'm not exactly sure. But if they were pulled and they were in the right-of-way, they weren't supposed to be in the right-of-way. And it may be election signs aren't supposed to be, I made a, made a mistake.
We need to make sure.
They aren't.
They aren't. No, they have to be behind the curb.
Right.
There's only so many per lot.
Right.
Yeah.
And there's so many per lot, and that's another thing. There was, I don't remember how many, I don't remember the final count, but there was several signs out there. There is a maximum number of signs that's allowed, so, and you are right, so thinking about the minors, you're right.
All right, anyway, everybody cool with 10 days? Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think the real estate people were fine with 10 days.
Yeah, they were, they, every time we found, we brought the fine down, and they were fine.
That's right.
But, uh, the problem, well, and we left it up to them to, to contact Burke after the 10 days, or they would, if, they would go pick up their signs after the period went out.
That's something we had with, with the major realtors in town.
Right.
We probably had 14 or 16 people in that residence.
Those were roommates.
That's right.
Some roommates. Okay, well, then, we all, except, uh, well, all those in favor, please, anybody raise your right hand and say aye.
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 That's unanimous, and may the record show that, that Julie did accuse herself. If someone would ask you to come back in.
Excuse me, I'm a little hard to handle, so...
You missed it, buddy.
Hey, bud.
All right, and we're, uh...
Where you been?
I'm not. Oh, Jesus. No, it's Julie.
Julie, that, that one did pass, if you're right.
Okay, thank you.
It did, and we had a discussion about the, the 10 days, and we think that's what all the realtors agreed to. And Mr. Brown had brought up that need to be a time, and Burke read the parts, it's already in there, so, so everything went well on that. Other business, item number 15, reappointment to the Tifton Tree Board.
Yes, sir, Brenda Douse in Alpots, terms are expiring. Brenda Douse does not wish to be reappointed, and Alpots does wish to be reappointed. So we will now have two vacancies on the tree.
Can we vote for Alan and I, when you do that?
Yes, sir.
I'll accept a motion on that.
I make a motion that we reappoint Mr. Potts to the tree board.
Second. I got a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, raise your right hand, saying aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Uh, Lou's Marty is on a board, we talked about, uh...
The housing authority. And I've left a message, I haven't heard back from her yet.
Okay.
As soon as I do, I will let you know.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Master, question. Who is the chairman of the tree board now?
Um, Joseph LaForest is, well, I, I'm not positive, really.
Joe didn't take it this time, I believe it's, uh...
Rigdon?
Jeannie Rigdon.
I believe so.
I wonder if we could go back to Jeannie and ask them to ask their board members if they have any associates that they would like to recommend or...
That's a good idea.
I'll do that.
Good idea. And we'll send the customer letter to Brenda, and we really do appreciate her time. You know, all good things will come to an end. Oh, no, we gotta make it a little longer. We have a very important, important event coming up this weekend, the Rhythm and Ribs Barbecue Festival in Tifton, Georgia. Make sure you get down in the park. And Mr. Attorney, he's outside the agenda. It's okay for him to do it. Get some free ribs, free airtime, something. Did the camera get that? So, put a little plug there for Rhythm and Ribs this Saturday. Hey, remember last year I was sick, and you, you put me on the, your phone? Hey, remember last year I was sick and you put me on your phone?
I did.
I'll be there this time. Help those two hand out the board. I hope I'm not sick again. Look at, see, you won't let me talk.
I'll slip to the end.
Well, y'all, once again, we thank y'all for coming.
Almost a wasted time for me.
This went pretty quick. A lot of time in our meeting, it goes quite a long time. Mr. Brown, we appreciate you coming. Certainly, you're right, appreciate all y'all coming, and y'all have a great day. We're adjourned.
Thanks, Manny.
Thank you.
I was cool.
Just come here.